Good morning, everyone. I'm calling the Wilson County Commissioner's Court for orders. Today's date is Monday, November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, time is nine and a half. But the minutes reflect that we have a full court in place. Before we call the, uh, before we continue all of the schedule of the orders here, we're gonna have a prayer by Reverend Reed.
Good morning, friends. Let us pray. Beloved source of all good, in this week of Thanksgiving, we gather this morning with gratitude for the gift of community and the call to serve. We give thanks for this Commissioner's Court, for each person here, and for the decisions that will be made today. We hold close in our hearts all the people of this county, those who labor in farms, in ranches, schools, hospitals, care homes, clinics, and families striving to make ends meet, first responders, and all those who depend upon the work done in this room. We are grateful to live in a free country with elections that safeguard our democracy, grants that strengthen justice and fairness, and emergency operations to protect our neighbors in times of crisis. We pray for the Commissioners' clarity of mind, compassion of heart, and courage of spirit. We are grateful that their service reflects the values of justice, mercy, and stewardship. We pray this in your precious name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Agenda item number four, certificates of completion of wars and bond continuations. Item number four, certificates of completion of wars and bond continuations. The Texas Division Emergency Management Introduction to the Incident Command System, Basic Incident Command System for Initial Response, Introduction to the National Incident Management System, National Response Framework, and Introduction by Wendy Grant. We have a bond continuation by Haley and Robyn. I'll put those in the notes. We have Western Surety Company Official Bond and O four Cassandra C Trinidad.
Judge, that's an approval item, so we need, yeah. So who, who is at, where do they work? What's the ballot for?
Okay, that'll be agenda item number five. I apologize. That bond amount is for ten thousand dollars for Cassandra C Trinidad.
Where does she work?
Governor of the use and benefit of the district clerk. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the bond to Cassandra Trinidad.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner King. Any other discussion, we're going to get to item number five. Here now, a call for the vote. All in favor say aye. All opposed against aye. Ayes have it, the motion passes. Item number six, we have our extension activity reports. Anybody from Abbott Light here? Item number seven, we have Commissioner Kurt Holt, precinct three. Ten o'clock AM, public conference, are you asking for this hearing today, or are you posting it for another day?
No, we, we voted on it last time to have it today.
But you're not today.
Okay, so we're gonna pass that and go to item number seven. We'll return to that at ten o'clock. Item number eight, Brenda Trevino, county auditor, discuss take action on extended agreement with Election Systems and Software LLC for the November twenty twenty-six election in the amount of nine thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars for Old Almirel, Elections Administrator.
Yes, so our Elections Administrator brought me a renewal agreement from Election Systems and Software. It's the Election Service Agreement. Um, this is for a renewal, uh, for the software that she uses during voting time and statistics. If you could, uh, be here for today to just explain to you, um, if you want a renewal, there's a question for you. Do you have a copy of it, or if you have it, it's online?
No, I have it on my computer.
Good morning, Judge.
Um, at the present time, we use, um, ESN F, which is our Election Systems and Software. And we have a, um, a project management, and she, they come out and they assist us with our, um, software or equipment. We have the tests, and they're required by Secretary of State, Nish Bahash. And so they come out and, uh, we run the tests and we have to, after that, then we were able, if everything passes, then we go ahead and we program our elections onto our equipment. And like I said, this is mandated by Secretary of State, so we have to have this done. Um, we also have a site support, which she comes the day of the election, and we visit all of our polling sites, and if any polling location has any problem whatsoever with our equipment, um, other than, of course, the programming, we have an assistant. And she's also there after, um, we close our polling locations, when we start running our, our, our voting, uh, data and everything. So just in case, um, something should go wrong, like equipment wise, we have somebody on site. Because, of course, we have to have our results that night, so there's no waiting. The, we, we, because we don't know the insights of equipment, just say, okay, it's this problem. We have to get our, our results out by that night. So we have a site support that helps us if anything should go wrong. Because, uh, like I said, we, we try to fix this something. We, we did have an incident when it was beyond our control, and we didn't know what it was. And, uh, right away, she called somebody that is actually located in San Antonio, came down and gave us assistance. So like I said, stuff like that, we, we can't control. But having so much help, help us.
So we do it every year, correct? We do this every year, okay.
Make a motion to extend the agreement with Election Systems and Software LLC for the November twenty twenty-six election in the amount of nine thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars for Almirel, Elections Administrator.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner King. Any other discussion regarding item number eight?
Did, did the county attorney's office look at, other than right now?
Um, no, I just got this right now. Is this, is this a standard one that, that you, uh, do every election cycle? And it's part of the budget? And it is for a year of January to, um, till December? Is that right? It looks okay. It's the same one I, I've reviewed before.
So, uh, the way it's written on the agenda, this sort of November twenty-six election, and what you brought up, what you did, of course, we have a primary, you know, this will go through those elections. This election cycle is what we.
So it'll cover the primaries.
Right, so basically, I'm sorry. So basically, uh, ESN F, like, are, are primary, you, your parties are the ones that pay for that election, so that will be covered, of course. That will come from the parties that will be paying this to, we have the county, and we're charged with a primary election, so we're getting this in the.
Okay, Mrs. Huron, do you think that, I need to change the motion.
Um, no, the term.
Says in the agenda, item number six, item of the agreement.
Yeah, no, I think it's okay.
Any other discussion? If you're not uncomfortable, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed against aye, ayes have it, the motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, so thank you.
Agenda item number nine, Brenda Trevino, county auditor, discuss take action on a resolution for fiscal year twenty-six TIDC formula, Moran.
Yes, um, Judge, if you, uh, would you like me to read the resolution?
Yes, please.
The twenty twenty-six Wilson County Resolution Indigent Defense Grant Program. Whereas under the provisions of the Texas Government Code, section seventy-nine dot zero three seven, and the Texas Administrative Code, chapter one seventy-three, counties are eligible to receive grants from the Texas Indigent Defense Commission to provide improvements in indigent defense services in the county. And whereas this grant program will assist the county in the implementation and the improvement of the indigent criminal defense services in this county. And whereas Wilson County Commissioner's Court has agreed that in the event of loss or misuse of the funds, Wilson County Commissioners assure that the funds will be returned in full to the Texas Indigent Defense Commission. Now therefore be resolved and ordered that the county judge of this county is designated as the authorized official to apply for, accept, decline, modify, or cancel the grant application for the Indigent Defense Formula Grant Program and all other necessary documents to accept said grant. And be it further resolved that the county auditor is designated as the financial officer for this grant. And this is a, a resolution for a continuing grant that we have.
If you're uncomfortable, do you have the.
She's not the, you have the original, right? Rachel showed it to me in the binder. She said this one's for the county court for signature.
Commissioner, I'll undertake a motion on agenda item number nine.
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the resolution in, for the indig- indigent defense grant program.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Martin. Any other discussion regarding item number nine?
I do have discussion, and it's just for items and general that came up on. In the future, whenever we're putting things on the agenda, if we could go ahead and use everything that it has to do with instead of a brevity. Because remember the public goes, what's a TIDC? And I go, okay, the TIDC is doing the things, it's a defense grant. It was easy to answer, but whenever people are looking at it out in the public, they don't understand what kind of, they don't deal with that very easily.
Can we do that? Whatever the acronym is, be spelled out.
They'll have to do it under request.
Right.
Yeah, because we just copy exactly what they request.
Okay.
Any other discussion? If you're not uncomfortable, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed against aye, ayes have it, the motion passes. Agenda item number ten, discuss take action on the Toshiba copier contract. The emergency operations presentation of contract by Mr. Causey. Uh, that's probably was a little bit confusing on the last time, because I think they didn't understand that that was contract was for one year. That was not the case, correct? Sixty months, that's correct, okay. And we have before you the layout of what we already paid. Um, on our current copier, so Mr. Causey, we're pretty much in line on this contract with the others. I see we paid more for others than this contract. And, and how many people are gonna be using this? How many people will be using this?
Approximately sixteen, over four or five companies.
Who, who are those sixteen people?
Uh, I, I'm not sure of the names of all of them. Uh, some of them are in dispatch, some are part of the ELC, uh, all the IT, fire marshal, uh, someone named John, oh, and Blake. I, I don't know all of them, so I'm sorry.
Where, where's the contract? We don't have a copy of the contract either.
I thought you were giving me a copy of the contract and stuff. It's for three hundred and three dollars and eight cents a month. Which is below the average that we pay for.
Ms. Huron, have you seen that contract?
No.
We're gonna have to be.
I'll let you take a look at. The authorizers, this is not authorized person assigned to it.
Is this a lease?
Yes, ma'am. Over sixty months.
Ask for a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, just a question, just to make sure that we're talking about the same.
Could you say yes?
In July, it's gonna be.
Next of your contracts, I'm gonna judge you.
For additional services for the new center. And in there, you mentioned to me that you were going to be leasing a new copier at a hundred and forty-one dollars and change a month to make sure that I can put that into the budget. Is this the same thing that you were referring to yesterday?
If we can get you to come up to the mic.
That was originally the one with Wiko, because that's what we have in the development permit. And that's the quote, and then we decided to switch over to the Toshiba, because you get more images for less per cost. Because with the three hundred and three dollars a month, you get three thousand color copies and three thousand black and white copies. And that's where the three hundred and three dollars comes from, it's based on per copy amount. So if we break it down, and they add it on there, the black and white is zero point zero zero seven six zero cents per copy. And so this ended up being cheaper in the long run, because many peoples were gonna have to access it.
And so with that, these are questions that we wanted to answer the last time. Everybody will have code. The code will take you over to whichever department you use it, that way we know where usage of the copies is happening.
Yeah, they want to, we can set up a security code so that.
Well, I think it's matter one, I think it needs to be done, because whenever you go over, if, if there's an abundance, then you need to be able to bill it out to whichever department is using the upgrade.
Well, I, there, there will be a security code, so that when they go up there, they can get their print jobs. Um, that security code will be tied to how many prints they make, and so you have to pay to look at that and parcel out.
Well, I'll need you to know for billing purposes, since currently each of those departments currently has their own printer device. Like this guy has his own printer, you guys have your own printer. And since this is going to be taking over everybody's, then that means the buildings will be split accordingly. So whether you guys want to split it based on usage, then you will have to know that information, every one of the employees. Or we take the employees and split by how many departments are being used.
So you wanna take the three oh three and split it between the departments?
Well, it's gonna be about four grand a month, I mean, four grand a year, so I, unless you just want it all to be budgeted in emergency operations, we can do that, I just need to know. Probably every department has a budget on nine or four.
Right, well, and actually, didn't you just say that you had it budgeted at one forty, and this is three eighty or twenty or something? So we've already got a budget problem that we're over budget, we hadn't even started yet.
Well, that was one department that, that doesn't take into account that you have all those other departments should be going in there. Is that, is that what you're doing? But I'm looking at Constable Lincoln, and of course, he may generate four copies a month, or he may generate forty or four hundred. But he's not gonna probably generate as much as the other officers there. And so I think it needs to be accounted for by having your own code for each department.
So is that, is that able to tell you, you put a code in, says, run a report at the end of the month off that copy, says somebody went to dispatch, somebody went to ELC, somebody went to the const.
Yeah, I, I think we could, I've never done it that way before, where everybody pays for their copies like that.
Or would it be similar, just to have it, but if the ELC is on, you know.
That would be the, the.
Well, that'd be the simplest instru-, but yeah, because constable, or none of the constables have a budget, per se, for copies.
Yeah, I think it would be simple, simple to just code it to emergency operation, um.
How much is dispatch, you know?
Dispatch, um, they have a, they have a printer that's sitting on it, yes. So I.
But they won't now, and it would be.
No, we still have those, but we need a, I can't, we can go across the building. But we will, they will save money on toner, I mean, throughout the year.
It's a matter of whether they're printing out a five-page document, or a hundred-page document, or a manual, or maybe they're gonna do batch warrants, and it's gonna be three hundred copies. They can do it there at their best, but like I'm saying, are you gonna spend less than a quarter of a penny to print that out?
If he did put a code on there, he could go to that line item. So if it is whatever department, it's on that line item, so you can see exactly it comes out of their budget for that.
Um, the contract says that it was signed on September third by Cindy Stafford, so has this contract already been signed and executed?
I wasn't supposed to, and then I sent it that same day to the judge to sign on September. And then it just hasn't gone anywhere since September.
Is this the one from last, the last meeting that was not approved? Okay, so has it been delivered? It's still waiting?
It's delivered after.
It's, it's not being used?
See, I have a problem with that, because this is not an approval. This is a ratification of an action that's already been done. Because you're not authorized to sign that. He has to be authorized by the court to sign.
I did not, that's fine.
Okay, well, that, that's fine. You, you know now, so, uh.
We, we can give another example, another case just like this, so you didn't know, I didn't know. We're here now to see if we can get approval.
Uh, I have a couple of the questions. Is this, there are fees if you go in excess of three thousand copies? Is that anticipated, that it'll be more than three thousand, because then it's gonna cost more per month than the three oh three?
So this is a new building with new departments, we're having a fire marshal in, and the fire marshal doesn't exist, I.
I mean, as long as the budget.
Bring the three thousand out there as a place to start. When they only hit fifteen, I, I have no.
And it does include the maintenance every month, the toner.
Toner, and the brakes.
Repairs. And for three, for sixty months, that's close to eighteen, nineteen thousand dollars. Is there a reason it's, there's one that you can't buy one?
You own it after the eighteen, uh, after the sixty months.
Pardon?
You, you actually own the machine?
Okay, so it's like a lease to own it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Of course, it's still on the box?
Yeah, well, it can't wrap, we saw the thing, it's still wrapped, they can't figure it out.
Now that we know that we're in the correct path, I wanted that path to right, they aren't before we put on this. Do you still have a copy of this?
I sent you the original via email, I sent you the email back, I don't have a copy. I don't have a copy.
If the original has not been signed yet, and this has not been submitted to them, we can just ask them to send us a note, a new one?
It was just an email, please, please, and so it's just, I didn't really have an original, it's just, it came up on, it was just.
I didn't sort of date on it, we were gonna tell them when we started the contract.
Let, and let's get that to Ms. Huron, so she can actually review it, make sure that she understands it and all that, because this just says a straight lease, say lease purchase, or, I mean, without spending some time looking through here, just to see if it says where the conditions are, that it's ours after sixty months.
We just wanted to, went with the, the she was, and, and we go, because this is a contract with Wiko. They, I mean, they have to pay an additional chunk of money, or you get it back, because that's what we did for, for the, for the development department. And I, I got, the copier guys, and we just renewed the contract with them, and they said, oh, no, the copier's yours, and you now bought it. So the, the development department, they have, and they went in an old, um, copier that's, it may still work, uh, you know, it works, it's fine, so, so she didn't have the copier.
They choose five years or half a decade for a reason, because you, you use a number of copies, and it goes that entire five years. At the end, it's falling apart.
Okay, so when do you get this taken care of? We're gonna pass on this again, right, let me take action, until we get the proper contract that's got from this Huron, and then we'll come back to it again. Can you survive right now? I know you're in your new building, without a copier. Okay, very good, so my recommendation, Mr. Reed, is, um, take no action on this until that is taken care of. Any objections? All right, we're gonna pass this. Thank you, guys. Then I remember earlier when we had Ms. Lewis set up for a permitting development director?
Judge, before we leave that, I'd just like to say, can we get a clear picture of who and what's gonna use that machine? We need a little bit more information still to understand the, 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 uh, how it's, how, how, how it's gonna be used. Y'all need to figure out all this billing and stuff and whatever, figure out who, because I don't, I don't think the sheriff has any intention of using that machine unless it's an emergency, so, uh, and I don't know about the rest of them.
Okay, so that will remain, next time, and who's gonna be utilizing it, and then, Ms. Colby, I'll get ready, see how we can get that to work, a code, okay?
Judge, I guess, it's a bit of a generality. Every contract that is gonna come to us as a Commissioner's Court needs to go through Mrs. Huron prior to getting to us. I, I, I mean, we can take and stave off a lot of this going on if our legal department is able to see that ahead of time. So if we're dealing with a contract, this is kind of putting, in my mind, everybody on notice, unless the court doesn't feel the same way, that you need to get it to the county attorney's office to look at prior to, so that they can go, I've got no problem with this, or yeah, I have concerns with this.
Agreed.
Well, we all need to be able to, on that, and sure, if, if anything comes across our computer from an empty item, it needs to go to Ms. Huron, and sure, if it's to the county.
I'll slave one of this here.
Move something, before we get started, um, I'm trying to, is there any attachments that we're, attachments sent in on these?
Yes, they were emailed individually to all the Commissioners yourself, the Secretary, and to Commissioner Ford's agenda email.
I don't know, mine did not go on last year.
It should be.
It should be, mine's right here for.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's under there.
Each one is under that.
It's under item eleven.
Yeah.
Okay, we're on track. All right, but we'll start with eleven, agenda item number eleven, one, eight, permit eight forty-two, charter spectrum precinct four, Moss Lane, Spring Valley, Big Oak Drive, White Wing Drive, Bell Hollow Drive, County Road. White Wing Drive, Bell Hollow Drive, County Road three twenty-four, review and approve.
So I did drive there and take a look at it. The one thing I wanted to say is that during the cleanup at the exposition center Saturday, Commissioner Perdola said that someone from the area had reached out and said that the contractors were leaving trash. After court today, I'll go out there and take a look at the area. Just wanna remind everyone in the public that this is not really a approval. Fiber optics get to do what fiber optics wanted to, uh, we're just acknowledging it and this is a manner. Trying to know exactly where they're working and accounting. So I make a motion that we accept permit eight forty-two as presented.
Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, second by Commissioner Perdola. Do you have any other discussion regarding item eleven, one, A? Here none, I call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against nay, eyes have it, motion passed. Remove eleven, one, B, permit eight forty-three, seven springs water supply precinct three, County Road three forty-two.
Maybe do B, C, D, and E?
All right, let me call that out. We will do eleven, B, C, D, three. Let me read them all. Eleven, C, is permit eight forty-four, seven springs water supply precinct three, County, Country Place Drive. D, permit eight forty-five, seven springs water supply precinct three, Ranch Road. E, permit eight forty-six, seven springs water supply precinct three, Dodge and Lane. Review and approve all these items.
I make a motion that we need to accept permit eight forty-three, eight forty-four, eight forty-five, and eight forty-six, all of the seven springs water supply.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Perdola, second by Commissioner Aiken. Any other discussion regarding item eleven, one, A, B, C, or D?
Or E.
Here none, I call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against nay, eyes have it, motion passed. Move to eleven, one, F, permit, well, uh, precinct one. Do you wanna do all three of those?
Well, let's do F and G only because the last one actually has other commissioners in it besides myself.
Gotcha. Okay, so we're gonna hear eleven?
F and G, sir.
F and G, eleven, one, F and G.
This information has been provided to Commissioner Martin. My opinion.
Hang on, hang on. I'll make a motion to approve permits eight forty-seven and eight forty-eight, eight for SS Water Supply and Precinct One on County Road three twenty-six.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Keane. Any other discussion regarding eleven, one, F and G? Here none, I call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against nay, eyes have it, motion passed. Remove eleven, one, H, permit eight forty-nine, charter spectrum precinct one, Whispering Oaks Drive, Arbor View, County Road three twenty-six, Jolly Road, County Road three twenty-five, Country View Drive, City View Drive, Metal View Drive, Sky View Drive, Review Universe.
Is, is County Road three twenty-five really supposed to be in there? Cause all the rest of those are mine, but three twenty-five, or wait a minute, I'm just.
I thought it was three twenty-six.
Oh, yeah, three, okay. Well, if it's three twenty-six, we already got three twenty-six and three twenty-six, I take. I take care of the, all the road, but part of it's in Commissioner Aiken's precinct down there on the far end.
And the utility companies know that they will be overlapping with fiber companies, so.
Three twenty-six is a split.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's what they want to have.
Cause I don't think I could, I could tell from the map exactly, um, where they were gonna be at. Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to approve permit eight forty-nine for charter spectrum.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Aiken. Any other discussion regarding eleven, one, H? Here none, call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against nay, eyes have it, motion passed. Remove eleven, one, I, permit eight fifty, Sunco Water Supply Precinct two, County Road two thirty-four.
So I've been out there to look at this and I'll make a motion to approve permit number eight fifty for Sunco Water Supply.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Keane, second by Commissioner Martin. Any other discussion regarding item eleven, one, I? Here none, I call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against nay, eyes have it, motion passed. Remove eleven, two, non-standard plat- variances, eleven, two, A, Santa Caprudas, one eighty, custom construction, discuss and take action.
Yes, Miss Jennifer Miller with Custom Construction was present to represent this split. And they are proposing to split five acre tracts out of a current ten acre tract. They do have utilities. They provide letter statements, so they're available for both, uh, uh, belts and water in that area. It was approved, it was a review committee.
I have been out and inspected this property and I would make a motion to approve the non-standard platform variance on Santa Capradas, if you want to.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Perdola, second by Commissioner Aiken. Any other discussion regarding two, eight?
Yeah.
Sorry, eleven, two, eight.
Can we get on C and D? Can we get them to put better answers, please, besides no, it won't affect anything? They need to give a, they need to state a reason. Everybody does. No, it won't. That's their opinion. They need to, then you're gonna have to start thinking.
Yes. I understand the application is a little confusing, but definitely, uh, for the most part, they just try to say, they're trying to sell their.
Well, exactly, yeah. They, they need to come up with a good reason.
All right, any other discussion on eleven, two, eight? Here none, I call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against nay?
Abstain.
Motion passes. Move to agenda eleven, two, B, FM three thirty-three, thirty-five, three thirty, forty-one, Johansson, discuss and take action.
I, go ahead.
No, sorry, Mr. Johansson would like to split the current point, uh, four point five two acre tract into two, two point two, uh, six acre tracts.
I've inspected the area, uh, three's access, County Road four thirty-three, which the main property sits touching thirty-three, thirty-five. I don't have any problems with it. It won't affect the area or cause any issues to be made.
It did present the letters of, uh, you thought they were available for both tracks in this area, so those are the.
We have a motion by Commissioner Aiken. Wait a second.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Perdola. Do you have any other discussion on eleven, two, B? Here none, call for the vote. All those favor, favors say aye.
Aye.
All those against nay?
Abstain.
Motion passes. We move to agenda item eleven, two, C, County Road four seventy-five, twenty-six seventeen, Denaya, is that right?
Denaya.
Denaya, Denaya, discuss and take action.
Mr. Denaya's current track track is twenty-two acres and would like to split out a four acre tract from that to, uh, to sell.
I've also inspected, I have no problem with it.
Second.
Was that a motion?
Well, I'm making a motion before we accept.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, second by Commissioner Keane. Any other discussion regarding this agenda item eleven, two, C? Here none, I call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against nay?
Abstain.
Motion passes. So noted. Uh, agenda item eleven, two, D. County, county, County Line Lane, seven seventy-seven, Renovation Sisters, discuss and take action.
Yes, this seven point nine acre tract is owned by Renovation Sisters LLC, who's Jenny Ray's was present to represent the split. They are looking to split out a three acre tract to sell and they also provide letters of water availability and.
Yeah, I could see when they put, will granting relief be detrimental to the public health and safety? Not applicable. It is applicable. You know, that's a place where they can address septic tank spacing, water wells, all of that kind of stuff. Feel free to update that and ask different questions if you want to, though.
Which precinct is that?
Precinct one.
Precinct one. All right, I'll take a motion for agenda item eleven, two, D. All right, I'm gonna take it one more time. Is there a motion on eleven, two, D?
I'll make a motion to approve the County Line seven seventy-seven, Renovation Sisters.
Motion made by Commissioner Keane, second by Commissioner Perdola. Any other discussion regarding agenda item eleven, two, D, before I call for a vote?
Yes, this is.
Here none, I call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against nay?
Abstain.
Commissioner Martin abstains, so noted. Motion passes. Agenda item eleven, two, E, County Road three twenty-six, eighteen ninety-seven, signs, take action, discuss and take action.
So this had been pretty deep off the review committee that was sent back and given, first of all, a denial from the committee. They, the property owner came back and adjusted the surveys to show forty feet of work finished for both tracts that are being created. Therefore, uh, abiding by our regulations, one of our, that's one of the things our regulations ask for. The tract is currently three point seven acres and they have shown as well, uh, availability letters for it to be sold. It was given a favorable recommendation, second time around.
And this is part of what we discussed before, three twenty-six to the north side of precinct four, three twenty-six to the south of precinct four.
Those property calls were in precinct.
All right, so I'm making a motion, we're gonna allow for this ten year, eighteen ninety-seven, County Road three twenty-six, seven.
Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, second by Commissioner Perdola. Any other discussion regarding eleven, two, E? Here none, I call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against nay?
Abstain.
So noted, Commissioner. All right, motion passes. We move to agenda item eleven, three, subdivision County Road one twenty-four, multi-family plat- subdivision A, review and proof of final plan.
So, uh, the developer of this subdivision is here, in attendance. We have a question for him. Uh, this is located in precinct one. When it first came through the review committee, they, uh, proposed a condo regime to which they came back and then decided that they were going to formally split on it and re-ake the actual lots, so they're doing with ten lots. And, uh, they have met, they have their approval department, contracted engineer, and, uh, they have met all the staff requirements as well.
And this has been reviewed by the county engineers before.
Yes, we have their.
So what happened to the culvert table? I thought there was a culvert table in there.
They had adjusted.
They had adjusted with speed.
Okay, could you bring him up here?
It is not, no longer.
Well, it's in point five six eight, and I thought that the only time that we would allow us in one is if it was one of the.
No, our regulations allow for half acre tracts, as long as we need, uh, setbacks for. As long as we need to setback, we.
Uh, that should be lot.
I was given a real recommendation from the review committee considering on the, uh, addition of the culvert.
It's not lot E, yeah.
Which, which lot has the water well on it?
Threatens.
Cause I don't, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, it's not jumping out at me. That, that's been a problem with some others that we've had in another subdivision. So we need to make sure that that well gets located on this map. I think it's lot.
I think it's lot.
It's either E or F, cause that's where the buildings are.
Yes, where the house is.
Yeah, okay, then it's lot F.
Okay, so now, you said it with the public water.
It, it is, but there's still a water well on that property. So their septic tank can't be, they've gotta meet the setback distances from that water well, whether it's used or not, to, to put their septic tank in.
And so because it's not, it's under half acres, they have to, when their, uh, both respects, they have to.
Water, on water tank, it's, number six is on lot E. So lot E is right, yeah, so number six.
No, okay, we found it. We found it. Switching back and forth. Just pull up there, they call this stuff out.
Everybody else is gonna be on, which supplier?
It will be at the process.
Because.
Yeah. And, and they are aware. I've, I've talked to them about this. Okay, I think, I think they got it. I'll make a motion to approve, uh, sub, the, oh, okay, this is entitled the County Road one twenty-four, multi-family plat.
Motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve County Road one twenty-four, Florisville, multi-family plat.
Motion made by Commissioner Martin, second by Commissioner Perdola. Do we have any other discussion regarding item eleven, three? Here none, I call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against nay, eyes have it, motion passes. Agenda item number twelve, Parker Chevy, Fire Mark, Carl Power, he's gonna give us Fire Mark. How many phone calls we get yesterday?
Two of me and Cindy. As far as our updates go, we, we, um, we're probably with all the annual inspections that were pending in firmly, as far as I know, have permanently been doing those two, we've been knocking those hours priority. Um, our inspections are currently being prioritized by hazard and occupancy type, that being daycare, assembly, doctors' offices. We're trying to get some of those high occupancy areas done and caught up, uh, in regards to that. Uh, we have issue for stock reporters on projects, uh, all of them be needed, uh, I mean, if the time in the insurance office to make sure I got those off, off the audio, if you will. Uh, been requested to perform four fire investigations throughout the county, um, three have been closed out, um, one is still pending of the sheriff's office and state fire market's office, and we're just working on one case. On the back end, as far as my office is concerned, we were inspected by, uh, the Texas Commission on Fire Protection, October sixteenth, and that the official green light to be regulated in regards to the inspections and investigations, but we are keeping proper records and following the proper procedures on that. Uh, they do regulate me in that regard. With that approval, uh, I'm gonna be allowed to start teaching these classes, uh. So, uh, we're gonna begin facilitating E S Ds and B F Ds to, uh, get some of those guys certified and inspections and investigations as well, kind of alleviate some of that, uh, my single person office from having to do, uh, much of those. Uh, we can have assign those to E S Ds in their respective areas, uh, and maybe forward that information off my office so we can get them filed and, uh, everything. Uh, we kind of assign those to ESDs in their respective areas, uh, maybe forward that information off my office so we can get them filed and, uh, everything filed. Uh, they complete all the lighting transfer paperwork and testing for TPO, so I'm set to start my TPO training January twentieth. Uh, those will be teaching classes, so I should not interfere with my daily operation here, uh, but, uh, starting in January, I will be in class, so that in the time. We're working on ILAs, municipalities, city software, it's called firm investigation, city of Birmingham, it's called firm investigations. I don't currently have an ILE set up with them, uh, as a courtesy, I've stolen out and assisted those departments in performing those investigations, uh, but I think we can have a, a formal agreement set up with them, uh, in case there are charges that would occur. Basically, those will allow us to, uh, build those folks directly for a piece for service, if those are anything that we have. One thing I meant to bring up a while ago, this was a discussion, uh, I kind of wanted to remind all the commissioners that we have a mask gathering permit. Uh, we had issues in October, I believe, uh, some mask gatherings that took place, uh, in the area, uh, we do have a permit on our website. Uh, basically, they fill that permit out, uh, including the sheriff's department, health department, fire marshal's office, just to ensure safety and security that everybody that's gonna be there. Uh, there are thresholds for that permit, uh, it starts at five hundred persons and goes up between five hundred persons. But it's unincorporated there, so municipalities can still have a mask gathering and not notify us. And those can come into account and cause issues as well.
So, kinda explain that, it's kind of a new term for us. I know it's in the law, but explain, I mean, if, if somebody has a private ranch and has a thousand people over, they have to have a permit?
Uh, yeah, so mask gathering permit, um, uh, again, it's just for safety and security. Sheriff's Department does have recommendations on them hiring up the officers for security purposes or traffic control. I believe it was on seven seventy-five we had a mask gathering, the backup of traffic, duck from the secondary through an accident that we had out there. I'm being asked at a hard time, you can see, we're on the property. These permits, basically, uh, we're able to look at those and identify ingress, egress, fire trucks, ambulances, we pass that on. We pass that on to the, uh, we pass that on to the fire department.
I'm waiting for somebody to cut through there.
Sounds like they're working up there.
There's also paramedics who's engaged when you take off.
Yeah, I, I will comment that I have been keeping an eye on that, this was at Camden's Adventure Center in Lebrunium, point seven seventy-five. They have changed their ingress and egress procedures and it seems to have cleared up the traffic problem. Yes, the first time they, it was the first day they opened the box, the, uh, soccer fields, and it was a disaster. They have traffic backed up both directions on seven seventy-five, they had an accident, but since they have changed their procedure, get people in and out there, it seems to be flowing much better, and we have not had any traffic backups, so I am keeping an eye.
I have spoken with a many of the mask gathering folks that who have, in TJ Cycle Ranch, Andrew's Adventure Zone, Randy's wedding venues. I haven't identified everybody that could hold a mask gathering, have the facility to hold a mask gathering, uh, but I have been reaching out to as many as I can just to let them know of the permit, the regulations, the requirements, and kind of why we're doing it, and what we're looking for. At the end of the day, it's just to hope that safety and protection behind.
I don't think anybody was, had an idea to have a turnout that they had, I didn't.
I spoke with, uh, Janina Camden, she had no idea either that it was gonna be such a high turnout.
It has, it has really been, and I guess it's a lead because it's, it's cool every weekend.
Yeah, they were holding it in city floor as well, and they out through that area, um, and Camden's had just opened up, so it was a perfect spot. How it would, uh, those problem areas weren't identified, which would normally have been identified through the permitting process. Um, I will say on our website that those permits are supposed to come through the commissioners' court, moving forward. Um, they are to be submitted and earlier than four to five days prior to, so that you guys can see that the sheriff has looked at it and approved it. I've looked at it, approved it, health departments looked at it and approved it, so long, so. I believe that can be changed, but if you have so deciding, that would be a discussion, take action, and then.
Question I have, who's the health department?
Yeah, you don't have one, right?
So, yeah, we gotta fix that too.
We have somebody on contract, right?
Yes, sir, we have one, we've got one on contract, right?
I think the Camden's deal was a learning curve for all of us, including, uh, Mrs. Shane that owns it. It's turned out to be a real deal, and they immediately took action, after the first day, it has run smoothly since.
They have been, they were fully compliant, they got all the documentation we needed, but we keep that soccer, uh, as a whole, we keep it moving forward, otherwise they've been disposing hundreds of children on their soccer tournaments.
Unbelievable turnout, so great turnout.
You got any questions on the mask gatherings? Basically, those come to my office and I'm sure we can send them to you without, uh, how you do the new sheriff, if it takes, you can get that number.
Yeah, I mean, it, it is a learning curve, I mean, and, and actually, we could probably use some help from the paper to help us with that, put that out, or put, do an article on it or something so that people, they're, at least made aware, they're still gonna say, well, I didn't know, but, you know, that's just the way it is.
There are indications we can get out for sure.
Yeah. Not too many things we can regulate, so the ones that we can, we need to make sure we stay on top of them.
Especially if that means people.
Yeah.
Can you elaborate on the stop recorders? Uh, they were unpermitted, some buildings were building up, um, I was kind of opposed to that, especially the commissioner, cause you guys are driving around a lot more than I'm just a single person, and I mean, you guys are as well, if y'all used to vertical construction going up, definitely does my office know? I would allow them to contact to make sure they're properly terminated, um.
But you're talking commercial, right, not residential?
Correct, yeah, yeah, if it looks like it's gonna be a commercial build, they're gonna run business out of it. All those stop recorders work for commercial businesses and, and they just were not educated on the permitting process. They do a lot of things that they can just build in Wilson County without letting anyone know, and all the fire code, um, and the regulations on that, so. Uh, once I never took an educated room, they were not, they were very compliant and consistent in their proper permits, so they were able to place stop recorders.
Again, that probably was something that our newspaper could count this week, educated fast.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from the marshal on this agenda item, before we move to the next one, which he also has, agenda item thirteen, discuss and take action, extending the county burn ban, alright, marshal, what do you got?
Alright, well, my initial intent prior to this, uh, precipitation we got was to extend the burn ban. You know, the widespread precipitation and influx of the cold moisture has helped maintain above normal fuel dryness for our area. It will keep fire potential limited currently. With this moisture, it will show low resistance to suppression efforts, the, the department should be able to handle any, any pretty quickly. My recommendation currently would be to let it expire and revisit this on the next commissioner's court. In regards to what I can see on weather currently, this will support burning for next week and a half or so, but I don't know if there are any stops, but that's going to be due. We are still in a drought index of above seven hundred, um, peak days, about seven ten. Every county around us still has a burn ban in place, I don't know if they're even looking for temporary burning or not, but we do have a lot of folks that need to get some stuff burned off. Uh, my recommendation was kind of giving two weeks to kind of get caught up on that, so we'll have few burning piles once we do allow them. I suppose to kind of.
What, does the, uh, burn ban expire today?
Today.
Tomorrow, yeah, tomorrow.
Yeah, probably for days from last.
Midnight tonight.
Yes, sir.
Tuesday night?
I would like to monitor weather, R K D I, you know, all our drought index numbers over the next couple of weeks, to kind of see if this rain did improve us. I did four numbers late last night, just to get the most accurate numbers for today, uh, they were still showing us in seven hundreds and months ahead. Uh, but however, with the surface moisture that we have, we should have, uh, not a high probability for a fire, given how it's, it's first right now. Uh, but again, that could change in a couple of years, so.
So your recommendation is we just let it expire, we don't have to take any action, we let it expire and then we revisit next commissioner's court?
Yes, sir, I'd like to study.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, revisit that.
So after midnight tonight, people are gonna be allowed to burn?
Yes, sir, with the, with the, yes, with the T C Q and T F S guidelines, yes. Uh, I am recommending that folks fill, fill out burn waivers, so we can at least log those permits, cause I do not want to tax the local fire departments in chasing smoke for the next two weeks. So, uh, we're still encouraging my guys, but at least keep the public.
We'll go with let it expire, there's no action needed on this, but let it expire, will we leave it on?
Yes, sir.
Unless something really bad happens.
Unless we have emergency, yes, I don't see that in the next two weeks.
Ten o'clock, may you judge? We're at ten o'clock.
Correct.
Uh, we're gonna stop our regular meeting and go for our ten o'clock hearing, thank you for listening, I didn't know, obviously, I passed that. Alright, do we have any, we have public hearing for County Road three fifty-six on no through trucks, do we have anybody that's signed up for public hearing?
If there is no public, uh, opinion on this, then I move that we, uh, move County Road three fifty-six, that's a no through trucks, and the reason being, there is a one lane bridge, it is a weight limit bridge, so, uh, that, that is the reason for the no through trucks.
Is it?
Motion made by Commissioner Perdola, seconded by Commissioner Aiken, any other comments, discussion on agenda item number seven?
What's the weight limit on that bridge?
Not really a weight limit, but it's, it came home, it was, it's a bad chip, it needs to be replaced, and I've got a contractor looking at tearing that whole bridge out, we're going. As of now, it hasn't happened.
Okay, yeah, cause I just had Tex dot come out and look at a bridge on County Road two oh seven, I have a lot of trucks going over, sheriff's department's aware of it, and, um.
That's what precipitated this, I called a bunch of eight, loaded eighteen units going down through there, and I had signs about a one lane bridge on both ends, and they paid no attention to it.
If, uh, if you call Mr. Follett, Tex dot, he can probably get the engineer out there, so we find out who that company is, and it will possibly, being with the county attorney office, possibly having them help repair this bridge if he finds anything.
It doesn't meet the, uh, assistant bridge criteria.
Neither does that one, but at the same time, they will still come out and do an inspection. So it's a, it's a good thing, and we gotta take care of our, our roads this way. Yes, sir.
Any other comments on agenda item number seven for public hearing? Here none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against aye? I'd have a motion passes at three, our journey, our hearing at ten oh three, and back into our regular session. Return to agenda item fourteen, our county sheriff.
Good morning. Good morning, should I copy this, uh, October month report? You see, in the month of October, we had five hundred and seventy-one reportable calls, one thousand four hundred and four non-reportable calls, or for a total of nineteen hundred and seventy-five calls for service, which is running pretty much average for the year so far. Live site calls, we only had forty-two live site calls in month of October, so they were almost cut in half. I'm not sure exactly why they went down, but that's always a good thing. Animal complaints, we had thirty-six, pretty much over a little bit of low average, uh, for the last month or two. Animal health calls, we had twelve, which is a little bit low for the year, but, uh, per month, uh, those still are, uh, taxed as far as kind of consumer, that, that. Had thirteen burn bans in the month of, uh, October. Had, uh, fifty-three arrests, burned four of them on call, nineteen on sight. Had a hundred and fifty-eight security checks, nine hundred and thirty-one patrol bodies, and traffic code enforcement for the month, a total of five hundred and seventy-seven. Mostly, mostly, it's traffic, uh, forces. Traffic citations through the month of October, a hundred and twelve, Miss Beaner other citations, twenty-one, three burn ban citations, two animal control, animal, or violations, pretty much out there, no live site violations. Looked five hundred and seventy-six traffic warnings, and forty, Miss Beaner only just probably four, uh, per animal's, uh, patients. And six burn ban ones. In October, CID grows twenty-four cases, and opened seventy new ones. One case of juvenile occupation, nineteen cases for county attorney's office, several to the. No clear by arrest, nineteen of those, uh, investigations were closed out, pending for the investigation, uh, running days. Sex offender verification, we started, uh, doing monthly checks, or equal checks on sex offenders, and there's nothing that's that's. Sex offender verification is twenty-three through the month of October, compliance checks ten, and no charges filed on the, on the. Uh, I've come over in addition, OLS, the eight felony arrests, and four Miss Beaner arrests through the month of October, stopped a hundred and twenty vehicles, and security control seven calls. Seized no weapons, uh, had one three-day county, uh, county operation, was in Alice. And had one conductive, uh, person in support. Seized in the month of October, four point two grams of meth, a half ounce of marijuana, and three hundred and fifty-seven ounces of T C.
Sheriff, wha- what's the latest? I've lost track of what the latest legislative update and the order the governor signed, and where, where's all that stand? Cause weren't they gonna try to unregulate, but then regulate the businesses? Because legislature didn't pass anything and the governor signed an executive order?
When it came to the T C and, uh, hemp products, uh, that died, because it didn't make it to the last special.
Right. And so the governor's order didn't mean anything because of that or something, okay?
So it stands as it was, uh, I, I look for revisiting probably next time.
Yeah.
Month of October, had an average housing in the jail of a hundred and thirty-seven. Uh, we in took eighty-five in the month, which I was just on the three a day. We have nine BS marshals, uh, inmates, a total of twenty-three thousand, two hundred dollars. We have five, two dollars coming inmates, a total of six thousand, eighteen dollars yearly paid, marshal's office two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty. Two dollars coming, ninety-six thousand, eighteen dollars. Report last month, we had twenty-eight reportable incidents in the court, uh, seventy-six non-reportable, those are mostly from, uh, the best deputies who worked with both. In county transports, they had sixty-one, out of county transports, they had twenty-three, and we did three animal health transports in Antonio, and arrested ten people in out of court. And we did three animal health transports in Antonio and arrested ten people in private courts.
Any questions to the sheriff? Very good, thank you, Sheriff. Move to agenda item number fifteen, I'll give you all a few minutes to check out this barnets report that she submitted. Okay, we'll move to agenda item number sixteen, Christina Moots, county treasurer, discuss and take action on county treasury farm.
Good morning. What I have to, oh, when I presented today is the month of October. As all these reports, it's the same, so if this one's what was paid, it does the rest, all of our checking accounts. Starting with the beginning balance, our debits and our credits within that account, they're beginning the ending balance for the end of October. Then followed by our CDs. Same thing showing the interest term, without month, October. Next page will be our investments. Text bowl, text class. All those accounts listed with an average interest rate still in four enforced. I mean, deposits made, which all sorts in those accounts, I guess so as well. Followed by our outstanding debt, nothing changed for the month of October for that. And then ending with what's labeled on top as the charge of my group work. Again, it's just each individual sum for the month of October. So maybe it's worth a quick, quick, real time session.
Watch out, Woodville interest sinking, let's see it crossed out.
Are you speaking the last page?
Mm-hmm, yeah, or close to last page.
Would that, the Wood Valley one, that one, I believe, is...
Wasn't, wasn't that an old, were they, uh, self-taxed to get a road made, I believe is, isn't?
Third time through?
Yeah, it's been a long time ago.
Way before my time, and I don't know if there's anything in regards of transactions or on the need to tax side of it, I can never look into it.
Why do we have, okay, the question is, do we need to have it on there anyway, if it's not existing anymore?
Does the report list any sign that we've ever had on there, even if there's no activity?
Yeah, if right now it's active in our software, but in the event we ever did something, it's, it's still active, but no transit, transactions are made. So that's something we can get together and see if it's, if we can.
I think I can make it inactive and then re-operate it.
Yeah, that's something we can look into, just so we check.
Commissioner, do you have any other questions from this? I'm gonna move to agenda item number seventeen, Jaylen Bonnerford, our human resource specialist.
Don't we need to approve that?
I'm sorry, you're right.
I mean.
That would need help, yes.
She, she wants that little thumbs up today, right?
She would have liked it, yeah, all right.
I'll make a motion to approve the October twenty twenty-five treasurer's report.
Sorry.
Motion made by Commissioner Martin, seconded by Commissioner Aiken. Any other discussion regarding agenda item number sixteen? Here none, call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against nay. Thank you, I apologize. Agenda item number seventeen, we have Jaylen Bonnerford, our human resource specialist, she says she has no report. Correct?
Correct.
Agenda item number eighteen, the friend at the leaner, our county auditor, discuss and take action on county bills.
Do you have the, uh, report on your tablets as well as a hard copy? Now please, the total amount is five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-six cents.
All right, commissioners, I'll entertain the motion to take action on the county bills.
Make a motion by receiving bills of ingress by county auditor, paying an amount of five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-six cents.
Correct.
Motion made by Commissioner Aiken, seconded by Commissioner Perdol. Any other discussion regarding agenda item number eighteen? Here none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against nay. I have a motion to pass before adjourn, I just want to wish everybody happy and safe Thanksgiving and enjoy and, uh, we'll be here the next quarter. All right, I'll entertain the motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Commissioner King, seconded by Commissioner Perdol, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against nay. We are adjourned at ten twenty a.m.